At this time, we call the Atwater City Council meeting for May 28, 2019 to order. Roll call, please.
Ambries?
Here.
Kale?
Here.
Raymond?
Here.
Viara?
Here.
Creighton?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, before we do the Pledge of Allegiance, I'm gonna get a special guest.
Right there. Dude.
He's so excited.
(laughing).
(inaudible).
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 Thank you.
(applause).
We pray your blessings over this meeting and over the items we're about to discuss, and pray that your will be done, Father, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Mayor, there are none.
There is. City Manager Waterman?
Sorry. Counsel, I'd like to request that our engineering project report presentation under reports and presentations from staff, if we can move that up under Presentations after MCAG Measure V update.
Looking for a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Kale, second by Raymond. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Approval agenda as posted or amended? Okay, yeah, we have subsequent need items.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I will second.
Motion by Raymond, second by Viara.
Viara? Yes. Kale?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Ambries?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ceremonial matters, Buhat Colony High School Boys Golf Team. Coach and the team, can you guys come up here, please? Okay, come on back here and kind of form a half circle, so we can all see you guys. Coach, get up here, you're gonna do some talking tonight. Councilman Kale, why don't you come join us over here? So, for those of you that don't know, this is the Buhat Colony Boys Golf Team, and I'm gonna let the coach explain why they're here tonight, why we're recognizing them at the city council. So, Coach?
Sure.
Can you introduce your name, and can everybody else introductions before you get started on telling us why they're all here?
Sure. I'm Mike Bell, Buhat Colony Golf Coach.
Jacob Freitas.
Joshua Padilla.
McLean O.
Jake Leonardo.
Justin Paisley.
Nick Allen.
Jonathan Valencia.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for having us tonight. This is a bunch of guys here, I've got five seniors that are gonna be graduating, so this was the year to go out and do it. And we ended up being 12-0 in CCC, so we had an undefeated league championship. We advanced as a team to divisional round, and then we did pretty well in the tournaments we were in, we just had an all-around pretty good year.
Awesome. So, having a golf course here in town definitely helps, right?
Yes.
Right down the street?
Yes.
So, we're really, really fortunate, very fortunate on that, that we have one of the best local golf courses in the Central Valley. So, with that, and these guys, their skill, congratulations, and Councilman Kale's gonna present you guys with the certificate.
First off, I'd like to say that if you guys are out there golfing and you see me out there playing, you're more than welcome to come up and tell me what I'm doing wrong, because there's a lot of things I do wrong. My best drive is the cart.[316.33][316.33](laughter) So, the City of Atwater Certificate of Recognition awarded to Buhat Colony High School Boys Golf Team for their extraordinary accomplishments during the 2019 season, have earned them the title of the Central California Conference League Championship. Congratulations, Kale.
(applause).
Okay, so we don't have anybody from, there's no one here from Atwater High School tonight, is there? Just wanna make sure they're on the next agenda. Acclamations, National Public Works Week 2019. May 19 through the 25th of 2019 is National Public Works Week, whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facility, services that are vital to importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of Atwater. Whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of the public works professional, who are the engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and private sector. We are responsible for rebuilding, improving, protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential to our citizens, and whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of Atwater to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest in understanding the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, the year 2019 marks the 59th Annual Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, and be it now, therefore, I, Paul Creighton, Mayor of the City of Atwater, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19 through the 25th, 2019, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and the government agencies and activities and events and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, to recognize their substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and affix the seal of the city of Atwater this 28th day of May, 2019. So, last week, we had a public works event over by Target Shopping Center, where we had the entire public works crew come out, bringing the trucks, trailers, backhoes, heavy equipment, for everybody to come out, look at, and climb on. It was kind of spontaneous, that we had brought the equipment out. In the years past, we haven't done it, but this year, I wanted to make sure, along with the rest of the council, they wanted to make sure that you guys that pay the bills around here seen the equipment and participated in it. So, we appreciate that, and we appreciate public works for all you guys have done, engineering, management, and the guys out there in the field, thank you very much. So, next year, we're gonna be looking at a bigger event, probably incorporating the schools, so that they can participate also, so that will be a much larger event. So, with that, City Manager Waterman? Presentations, monthly verbal report, Darren McDaniel, he's not here, oh, there he is.[572.16][572.16](laughter) Welcome, Darren.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'll make it quick, because I know MCAG has a quite lengthy presentation, I think it's about 40 slides, and about a 45-minute presentation, so I'll make mine quick. As you know, it's budget time again, I know your folks and staff is working very hard on budgets, I'm here to say county's revenues are coming in better than we anticipated, so we're looking forward to another balanced budget, but that's to come, we'll see how everything works out. Also, I want to do a, give you the county update. As an individual, we've created a position for a grant writer within our CEO's office, so we're gonna be focusing on efforts, as you know, with the passing of, I can't think of the prop right now, but Senator DeLeon carried it, there's a new park spawn out there, it's gonna be highly competitive, and there's a lot of money in it, so we've hired a person to look at that directly. Also, we held our second meeting on homeless and housing with Assemblymember Gray, so we had that, we had all the cities and everybody there participating in that. Also, for our voting system, we have a new voting system that's been installed, it's not gonna be active yet, I think it's gonna be the first in next month at the Board of Supervisors. So, we will be casting a ballot, or our vote, and it'll be all electronic, our motions and everything, so there's no going back, looking at tape, saying, "I didn't vote that way," because we're electronically voting, and it'll be displayed on the monitors out front as we vote. Notable meetings held regarding castle that affects Atwater, we have a meeting with a uniform manufacturing company, and we've been consulting with their construction company. So, that's gonna be jobs brought to the area, we're looking forward to that one. And there was something else here, that it doesn't really affect the city of Atwater, but it's roadside cleanup, we got a weekly update on what we do out there, and it's interesting. General refuse, 3.5 tons collected. Mattresses, 18. Appliances, 3. Microwaves, 2. Car tires, 40. And rims, 10. But it's just interesting that we are out there, we get calls on it, especially down the Santa Fe Corridor cleanup, but that just shows you how much we are out there cleaning up, and it's, as you can see, it's quite a feat, and at that, I think that's it, if there's any questions from anybody.
Counsel, you have anything? No? Thank you very much, Supervisor McDaniel.
You're gonna let me off that easy, huh?
You went pretty quick tonight.
Thanks, we'll wait for the next presentation.
Thank you. Merced County Association of Government?
Good evening, members of the council, Mayor Creighton, his Waterman, staff, I will put your minds at ease, they're not 45 slides.[765.13][765.13](laughter) Thank you, Supervisor. The better the news, the shorter the presentation, right? I think we have good news today. Oh, perfect. So, I, before I start, I just want to introduce two of my colleagues that are here as well this evening, Matt Fell, our Transportation Planning Manager, so I'm going to deflect all the hard questions at the end to him, as well as one of our associate planners, Ty Pimazon, who's been a longtime planner with the agency. And so, as the designated local transportation authority, MCAG administers Measure V, and, which is the half-cent transportation sales tax, that was passed by the voters of Merced County by a 71.3% approval rating back in November 2016, and went into effect April of the following year. And the impetus of us being here tonight is that we've released our first annual report, which you have a copy of in front of you, and we're going to all the councils throughout the county, and sharing with you and the public the information that is in that report. And as we look back on that first year, which, as I mentioned, started April 1st, 2017, and went through the first fiscal, full fiscal year of the measure, so it covers about 15 months, we really measure ourselves against the promises that were made to those voters, and I'm happy to say that, as I stand here, those promises have been kept, to the tune of $20 million in revenue in those first 15 months. Every single dollar is spent on transportation purposes within the county, as promised. There is an active and involved Citizens Oversight Committee, which was one of the first things the MCAG Governing Board did in May of 2017, was approve, appoint those members, and even though the measure only says they must meet annually, they actually continue to meet on a quarterly basis to review the expenditures of all the jurisdictions. And in January, they approved the first independent audit that was conducted of all the jurisdictions, and that audit resulted in no findings. The measure committed to a high degree of transparency, and to keep the public informed on all aspects of the measure, which is one of the reasons why I'm here tonight, it's one of the reasons the public was able to view the boards in the lobby, thank you for allowing us to set those up. They'll be here for a little while longer, and, like I said, we're going around all the county and showing those, as well as the hard copy of the annual report in English and Spanish, stack of which I will leave in your lobby for the citizens of Atwater to continue to pick up. So, just a little bit of a high-level overview of the measure, for those that don't know, again, it's a 30-year half-cent transportation sales tax. It conservatively estimated about $15 million per year in new revenue for transportation, but as we all know, that can fluctuate on an annual basis, it was a little higher than anticipated, in future years, it may dip a little bit below that mark as well. On the ballot, the voters did not specify in the measure the specific projects that the money was going to be used for, rather, it delineated a specific percentage by category of how the revenue would be spent, according to the categories you see in the pie chart. So, the biggest percentage was 50%, and the green and orange pieces of that pie go to the local governments throughout the county, so all six cities plus the county, to spend as they see fit. And one out of the, five of those dollars that goes to the local jurisdictions are specifically for alternative modes of transportation, so that can be sidewalks, curb cuts, bike lanes, multi-use paths. In the future, that could mean something like scooter programs or microtransit programs, and the like, but those dollars are spent according to how those local communities dictate. The next largest chunk is regional projects, 27% for east-side regional projects, 17 for west-side regional projects, 5% for transit, and 1% for administration. So, just to dive a little bit further into the local project funding, again, 50% is split between the jurisdiction, and that is based on a formula where there's a baseline of $150,000 per year to each jurisdiction, plus a percentage of maintained road miles and population within that jurisdiction. The city council in Atwater decides how to spend your funds. Again, one out of five of those dollars is on alternative modes, and in the first 15 months, 50% of all the revenue equated to about $10.3 million, of which 848,000 and some change went directly to the city of Atwater for transportation. So, the next biggest chunk, regional projects, again, split between the east and west side areas of the San Joaquin River. In the first 15 months, about $5.5 million went to east-side regional projects, and $3.5 was programmed for west-side projects. Those project recommendations are made both by east-side and west-side regional project committees, who make recommendations to the MCAG Governing Board. On the east side, that committee consists of Mayor Creighton, other mayors from east-side cities, as well as Supervisor McDaniel and his colleagues on the board, who all have areas on the east side of the river that they govern. The MCAG Governing Board is mandated by the measure to, every two years, put together an implementation plan, so in 2018, they put out the first two-year plan, where they programmed revenue, that you can see here, so you can see that it delivers projects on both the east and west sides of the county. And in the city of Atwater, $1 million was appropriated to the Wenton Way reconstruction project, all the way through the construction phase. So, 5% of the measure's revenue goes to transit, and one of the most popular things, and one of the first things the Governing Board did, was establish a free fare program on the bus. Any veteran, senior over 62, and ADA-eligible passenger can ride any fixed route in the entire county for free, and they can do that through various forms of ID that they show the operator of the bus. And this, again, like I said, has been one of our most popular programs, it was just approved again for another two years by the board, with an increase in funding. It resulted in 11% increase in ridership for just this population, and a 7% increase in overall bus ridership. So, the word's getting out, and we're really excited to see that our bus system is growing in Merced County, which is converse of the national trend for transit. And as I mentioned before, no more than 1% of all measure revenue goes to administration, that does go to MCAG as the local transportation authority. We have a variety of duties, in addition to planning, all the planning work that the staff, Matt and his team do, our finance team facilitates quarterly reporting, hires the independent auditor, conducts those reviews, staffs the Citizen Oversight Committee, as well as staffs both of the regional project committees, puts together the implementation plan, and just ensures overall compliance. When jurisdictions have questions, they call us, and we go out and we talk to them, and are able to help in whatever way we can. Also, like I mentioned before, keeping the public informed, so that they know their tax dollars are being spent as they determined that they wanted them to be. This includes the annual report, various community events, our website, our monthly e-newsletter that goes out, social media, so you'll see here a variety, we're on Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, and as one of our favorite people said, we're hashtag awesome. So, we like to see those pictures on there, so keep sending them to us, we post them frequently. Members of the public can take pictures of Measure V work, send them to us, our hashtag is #measurve underscore MCAG, and we like to post those of all the jurisdictions. So, having said that, I don't think that was 45 minutes.[1300.15][1300.15](laughter) Here's our website, all our handles, if any of you are on social media, any of the public, I encourage you to follow us on any of those platforms. And our board meetings are the third Thursday of every month, we had some members of the public inquire about that tonight, June 20th, at the county building this month, and next month, July 18th, actually here in the city of Atwater, in the council chambers, both of those are at 3:00 PM. So, I will stop there and see if the council has any questions for us.
Counsel, you have any questions?
Really?
You're gonna get off pretty easy tonight. Thank you for the good work, and thank you for both Ty and Matt, good job, you got a great team.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Or, oh. We don't have that, oh, maybe we should, oh, that's right, we moved that up. My apologies, we moved the engineer's report for the city of Atwater up to the front, so we don't have to keep them here all night.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mrs. Waterman and staff, glad to be able to continue the story of good news so far tonight.
Maybe a little louder in the microphone, so I can pick you up.
Sure. Is that better?
That's perfect.
All right, thank you. We're gonna talk about capital projects update, there are quite a few to get through, so I'll take probably the rest of Ms. Rawlings' time, and some of my own.[1401.33][1401.33](laughter) Not really. So, before you, you can see a map of projects, it's difficult to read at this scale, but the story to take away from this is that there are a lot of projects, and they're all over the city, and we're gonna talk about each one of them right now. These are in chronological order, starting from the oldest to the newest projects, in terms of when they were assigned numbers. So, Project 14-2, the traffic signal synchronization, is a big project, a lot of people are interested in, it's gonna have a great impact on improving traffic flow around the south-central part of the city. It'll interconnect Bell Lane at Applegate Square, Bell Lane at Bell Drive, Applegate Road at Wenton Way, Applegate Road at Sycamore Avenue, Atwater Boulevard at Wenton Way, and Olive Avenue at Wenton Way. It will modify the signal of Applegate Road and Sycamore Avenue, change the phasing there to better predict, protect pedestrians, and it'll construct a new signal at Olive Avenue and Wenton Way. This project is possible because of CMAC funds. CMAC is a federal program, congestion mitigation and air quality, it reimburses for projects at a rate of 88.53%, so it gets really great leverage for our local dollars, roughly nine to one. So, every one of those CMAC projects is a great project to go forward. This project was awarded to the contractor by yourselves on April 8th of 2019, we held the pre-construction meeting on April 24th. Currently, we're reviewing and responding to requests for information from the contractor, and submittals of all the materials that have been procured for the interconnect and the new traffic signals. So, that project is moving along pretty quickly. As we go over each one of these slides, I'll ask, if you have any questions, we could talk about it while it's fresh, or if you want to wait until the end, that's fine, too.
I think we'll just keep it while it's fresh, ask questions.
Okay. So, any questions on this project?
Counsel? Nope.
No? Okay. Project 14-3 is a Juniper Avenue pedestrian and bicycle path, you've probably seen this project now, it constructed infill sidewalk on the south side of Juniper from west of Van Terrace to east of Almodoro Terrace, and on the north side of Juniper from existing to Bridgewater Street, and on the west side of Bridgewater Street from Joan Fall Park, all the way to the driveway, all the way down to Juniper Avenue. New bicycle path, filling in a gap on that, on the north side of Juniper, from existing on the west side to Bridgewater on the east side, put a new curb ramp in at the northeast corner of Bridgewater and Juniper Avenue to meet current ADA requirements. This, again, is a CMAC project, and construction is complete on this one, we're in the financial closeout phase, gathering the last of the contractor invoices and taking care of that with Caltrans. And the local match on this, I believe, was a local Measure V, so another, a great leverage of that half-cent sales tax. Got $9 back on each one of them, again. Any questions on this?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
At the southeast corner of that project, along Juniper, did you guys go out and complete a walkthrough punch list, any defects, there's a elevation change where the asphalt had sunk about four inches below the handicap ramp right there, I don't know if that's been taken care of?
I was not aware of that. I did not conduct the punch list, but I'll go take a look at it first thing tomorrow.
Since we're wrapping that up, I'd like to make sure that we get a chance to look that over.
Absolutely, will do.
Anybody else? Keep rolling.
All right. Thanks for bringing that to our attention. Project 14-4 is the Buhat Road Pedestrian Infill Project, you've seen this one as well, it's also constructed. There was a little gap for a long time, we worked out some permissions, and after we determined we could not relocate a couple of PG and E poles, as unforeseen construction circumstance, as you know, those things can happen, but we're glad to be looking back on it now, with a good path from Avenue 1 all the way up to the existing sidewalk there at the south end of Buhat Colony High School. Again, this was CMAC funds with local match dollars, great leverage, and we're in the closeout phase on this one as well. Are there any questions on this project? Nope? All right. 15-1, Wenton Way Reconstruction. This is the one I get asked about all the time, you probably do, too. This is a full reconstruction of Wenton Way, from Broadway to Juniper, and then, it's actually a little bit north of Juniper, and then it's dig-out replacement, as well as driveways, curb ramps, and some crack ceiling and such, north of that, all the way up to Bellevue. So, the Phase 1 portion of the project goes from Broadway to Mitchell. It includes, I think we talked about, but sidewalk infill, whether it's not sidewalk, and then all the driveway approaches on both sides of the road will be brought up to current ADA standards, they currently, they currently don't meet that, they did when they were built, but they're being upgraded to the new standards. This will be coordinated with a sewer line replacement from Broadway to Juniper, we're working with interim director Brian Shaw over there, on making sure that we get that incorporated as well, so that we don't go back and dig this beautiful new street up after it's done. Very fortunate that the Regional Measure V Projects Committee awarded this $1 million in last year, and the council prudently had us hold off just a bit to get that $641,000 of RTIF that's coming back as LPP, local, it's a local program. This project is a regional project. This project is a regional project, and it meets the requirements for the match on L P P, it's a great use of those funds. That return was facilitated by some strategy at the folks at M C A G because it was a perfect fit for this project. There is a potential that there could be additional funding for this project in the future, but that's uncertain at this time. The committee has ongoing conversations about funding. That's a question I've got quite a bit lately. The local Measure V, R S T P, and S B 1 are all funding sources for this, and we're anticipating to advertise it in August of this summer. Are there any questions on this project?
When you say you anticipate advertisement in August, what do you mean by that?
So the timing of the funding from L P P is not certain, Councilman, because it's awarded through the California Transportation Commission. So the project is shovel-ready. It's ready to go to construction, but the timing of the funding is not certain. That's why we have an anticipated date of advertising it for construction. Good question. Any others? All right. Project 16-1 is a signal modification at Juniper and Schaefer. This is a federal project as well. It'll change from permissive phasing to protected phasing to align those left turns with pedestrian crossings for better safety there. It also reconstructs some of the, three of the four curb ramps and restripes those crosswalks to be a little bit more visible to motorists as well. P S and E are complete. The next step is to file the request for authorization for construction and finalize the bid package. This project is funded with H S I P, with a small city match as well, another great leverage of local dollars, and we anticipate advertising that one right towards the end of this year in December. Any questions on that?
Nope.
All right. I know this takes a while to get through, but it's a testament to how busy your staff's been. Project 16-2, Fruitland Avenue reconstruction. The reconstruction, this will reconstruct Fruitland Avenue from Orchard Park to Schaefer Road. It's a really big expensive project that is gonna be bitten off in phases. The overall plan, specs, and estimate are complete for that work from one end to the other. They're on the shelf, as we say, ready to go. Pump station plans for the basin just north of the Savmar Shopping Center there, those are almost complete. They're just finishing up the electrical. Phase 1 is that corner that gets really beat up, just where the, if you're westbound, you turn south just before you get to the canal there. That's the Phase 1. We anticipate advertising that in September. The plans are 95% done. We're tightening up the specs right now, and, you know what? I'm sorry about that. The specifications were delivered complete last week. What we require is right-of-way acquisition and utility relocation. You've probably seen some trenching out there lately, that's A T and T working on relocation of their facilities. Their pole is a joint pole, so it will remain, but it's going to be relocated behind where the future curb and gutter will be. This is being funded with local Measure V, and we are currently working with the Donahue Schreiber Real Estate Group for acquisition of the basin property for Stormwater. We're getting really close on that one as well.
So wouldn't you say that was going out to construction?
September is when we anticipate advertising that. We have, we have a, I'm trying to think of the correct legal term for it, but basically we have an approved agreement by, it's been reviewed by the city attorney's office, and the consultant is negotiating to get the final signatures for acquisition there. Once we have the right-of-way and the pole relocated, we can let the rest of it out for construction because that's ready to go. So conservatively, we said September. If we're ready to go sooner than that, we will go sooner than that.
So we're just waiting on the attorney's office to wrap that up?
No. It's not in the attorney's office hands, it's in the hands of the right-of-way consultant that's, has negotiated the acquisition price with the owner, but we need to get the documents completed. So that's in progress right now.
So does this mean we can finally get rid of that stupid stop sign?
Can you be more specific?
Fruitland and Orchard Park.
That's Phase 2. He's talking about Phase 1.
Yes. You derailed the good news train. Yes, so this Phase 1 will not affect any stop signs, but hopefully very soon we'll be constructing future phases and be making those circulation improvements that you're talking about that are in those plans.
I think what Councilman Raymond's talking about, maybe take a quick note. Fruitland Orchard Park, that stop sign needs to be, not there. It doesn't, it's just a right turn only.
Oh, okay.
That needs to be removed. So it has been five years he's been asking for that. I don't think, it's been on your desk for five years, but we're gonna put it on your desk tonight to get that removed.
Accepted, I can do that. Any other questions on this project?
No.
Okay. 17-1, Eileen Colburn Pedestrian Improvements, Phase 2. This is another federal project that C M A C funds, another great story of leveraging local dollars. This will construct new sidewalks, curb and gutter, driveway approaches, median islands, and curb ramps on Mitchell, Grove, Heights, Juniper, Herman, Liberty, and Dolores. We anticipate advertising in October. This project, we anticipated being ready sooner than that. What has happened is that the state has reached their limit on O A, their obligation authority for federal funds. So construction funding, which we anticipate will be submitting to Caltrans for next month, will not come any sooner than October, at the beginning of the next federal fiscal year. So we anticipate advertising this in October. This is a great project. You're probably familiar with the first phase of Eileen Colburn. You know, it got a lot of cars off the road over there, because there were kids that would need to walk in the middle of the streets to get to school. And putting those sidewalks in there lets them have a safe passage from their home to that school and to the parks and the other amenities, and it keeps those cars off the road. We've got a couple of projects going like that. This is just a really good example of the next one that's coming your way.
Great.
Any questions?
Nope.
Okay. Project 18-1 is Third Street Sidewalk Improvements. Mr. Shaw, you'd be really great if I didn't say Fourth Street for once. Is that right? Yeah. This project was first introduced to me as a Fourth Street project, and I've been calling it the wrong name ever since. It'll replace portions of sidewalk, curb and gutter, and a little bit of conform paving along Third Street, Mulberry Avenue, and Fourth Street. Much like the great difference you described a few moments ago, Mayor Creighton, the sidewalks out here look like that a lot. This is a great project, use of the local Measure V alternative modes, which was just described, $1 out of every five that comes to the city is set aside for alternative modes. Pedestrians are an alternative mode, and improving those sidewalks to a passable state is a great use of those funds. The drawings are done for that, we're putting together a bid package, we anticipate this summer and August of letting that out for advertising and construction.
Great.
Project 18-2 is a new traffic signal, Atwater Boulevard and First Street. It's a T intersection, right now it's always stop-controlled. This project will upgrade the curb ramps and put a traffic signal there. It's being paid for with L T F dollars. The P S and E are currently in review, and we anticipate going out to bid with this one in October. Any questions on that?
Nope.
All right. Trying to move a little quicker here for you. Project 18-3 is very similar. It's traffic signal modifications that went away in Juniper Avenue. So some years ago, this project was retrofitted to camera control. It's operating in a less than optimal state. This project will retrofit this back to detector loop control, which is a little more reliable, a little more predictable in terms of maintenance. It's being paid for with R S T P funds. P S and E are in review for this, and we also anticipate advertisement in October.
The reason October, you're gonna coincide with the new blacktops that we're not doing twice, or why?
Correct.
Okay.
We want to put the loops down.
In the fresh blacktop.
Before the final paving goes out on Wenton Way. Exactly. So this project could probably go to bid sooner than that, but we want to make sure it's closely coordinated with that pavement on Wenton Way.
Excellent.
Any other questions? Okay. Project 18-4 is a systematic safety analysis report program. This is called S A R P. It will perform a collision analysis, identify safety issues on city road network, and develop a list of systemic low-cost countermeasures that can be used to prepare future H S I P and other safety program applications. Having this study in our pocket helps us be more competitive when we apply for grant funding for safety projects. This is being paid with H S A funds and a city match. I believe the city received $112,500 for $12,500 that we put up, so it's another great leverage of local dollars. We're currently reviewing resources and developing the scope of work for this. We anticipate to go out in December. So this work will probably be ready next summer, which happens to be, coincide with a lot of grant application timelines, so hopefully we've got this one ready in about a year from now. Any questions on that? Okay. Project 18-6, Mitchell Avenue Reconstruction. Very similar to the Eileen Colburn Phase 2 pedestrian improvements, but it's on the other side of Wenton Way over there. This would replace degraded, oh, you know what? I was so excited to talk about that project, I skipped over the one that's on this slide. I'll catch that one in a minute. Mitchell Avenue Reconstruction is to fix that really, really beat-up pavement behind the foster freeze over there. So there's a gap between the Eileen Colburn Phase 2 project where, or Phase 1, pardon me, where some improvements were completed, and the future Wenton Way reconstruction project, which will get just a little piece of Mitchell there where it connects to Wenton Way. This project would use L T F funds to fill that gap and make sure that that pavement is comfortably passable from Wenton Way, you know, all the way down Mitchell towards the school and those neighborhoods back there. So, any questions on that one?
No, that's gonna be nice where the kids all gather for the parade, so that's gonna be a nice improvement.
Similarly, I didn't put the detail in here, Mr. Mayor and Council, but the drawing is complete on this, we're putting together a bid package, and that one will be ready pretty quick.
Awesome.
Project 19-1, this is the one I want to talk to you about. This is Mitchell Schools Area Pedestrian Improvements, another federal project, C M A C funds. Again, 88.53% on the reimbursement from the feds on that, which was a project selected by C M A C on the last round of this grant opportunity. This would construct new sidewalks, curb and gutter, driveway approaches, and curb ramps on Juniper, Seventh, Laurel, Ivy, and Second Street. And we anticipate, again, going to advertisement in October because of the current situation with the state and the federal funds. But plan, specs, and estimates are about 70% complete on this project right now, it's moving along very quickly.
Great.
Any questions there?
Nope.
All right. I think this is the last one we're working on, is wastewater treatment plant drying beds expansion. This would expand the biosolids drying beds, construct a push wall at the conveyor discharge, and construct permanent containment walls around the drying beds. P S and E nearly complete. Since the time this slide was completed, I believe that Mr. Pound, who operates the plant out there, has given his concurrence on the 100% civil improvement plans this afternoon. So we are kicking off the structural design for the push wall and the containment walls. That'll take about a month. And the reason this is important is because the more room we've got out there to take our time with those biosolids, the less they weigh, and the less it costs the city to move them from the wastewater treatment plant to their ultimate residence. So it's a good program as well. Any questions on this one? Nope? All right. I see you're all still awake, I'll take that as success.
Those are a lot of projects. It's great news, things are happening in this city. We heard what you guys said, and this council's getting things done, and staff is executing flawlessly. Counsel, you have anything you want to say?
Just thank you for all your hard work. It's a pleasure, thanks for your support.
Ambries?
I just want to echo that, thank you very much. It's awesome to see that our infrastructure is being worked on.
Yes.
Kale?
And I echo what these guys said, thank you for all your hard work, and you guys are doing a great job.
Thank you, very much appreciated. Right. Any other questions for me?
City Manager Waterman.
I just wanted to thank staff as well. There's a lot of behind-the-scenes work that comes into these projects, and the community doesn't always get to see that part of it, but it's exciting that we have so many projects coming forward now, and everybody's gonna get to benefit from those, so it's exciting to move those forward this year.
Yes, and we're gonna share that information with you guys if you didn't get it all tonight. It'll be on the website, there'll be other venues you can gather this information and look it over, ask questions. But again, we heard what you guys said, and we're executing, so great job. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, moving on to consent calendar.
Background information has been provided on all matters listed under the consent calendar, and these items are considered to be routine. All items under the consent calendar are normally approved by one motion. If discussion is requested on any item, that item will be removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Are there any items on the consent calendar that the city council would like to remove for separate discussion or possible action at this time?
Yes, Mayor, I actually had some members of the public reach out to me regarding items 6, 7, and 8, so maybe pull them off for separate consideration.
Any other members of the council? Any members of the public at this time? Seeing none. Items 6, 7, and 8 for separate discussion. May a motion for the rest of the consent calendar?
Motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Motion by Raymond, second by Vera.
Raymond?
Yes.
Ambries?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Kale?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Agreements, item number 6 on consent calendar, awarding professional services agreement to Kynes Air Conditioning and Heating, for heating and air conditioning repair and preventive maintenance services. Plowworth Shaw.
Yes, sir.
Raymond?
You want to present item 6?
For the awarding of professional services agreement to Kynes Air Conditioning and Heating for the heating and air conditioning repair and preventive maintenance services for, you know, for all the buildings in the city.
Great. How did we come with Kynes? An R F P or?
Yes.
What was the process?
It was an R F P. In the packet that has all the, we had four people submit an R F P.
And these guys were by Flondo Lewis, correct?
Yes.
Nice. I saw that in there.
We had one that he couldn't even, he couldn't give us an idea of how much it would cost a month. He just, it was uncertain, he said.
And the R F P process went out as typically, we did it advertising, we put it on the website, we advertised it in the newspaper. The bids were submitted to the city clerk's office and then reviewed.
So with that comment, policies and procedures post the state audit are being executed, followed by state law and the guidelines, so that there's no, just go get three quick bids and make it work and show through the council. It's formal bidding process through the newspapers, the city clerk's office, and everything was done legit this time, so.
Went through legal and everything.
This is the start of a new projects and new direction we're headed. Raymond, anything else?
Nope.
Okay, item number 7. Oh, well, yeah, we need a motion on this item, counsel.
Motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Raymond, second by Kale.
Kale?
Yes.
Ambries?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number 7, awarding professional services agreement to Provis and Pritchard Consulting Group for Engineering Design Services for 123 Trichloropropene TCP Treatment at the Water Supply Well Number 28, interim director Shaw.
Yes, this also went out as an R F P. We had, I think we had five people put in. We had, we had five people put in for it.
Five people or five companies?
Five companies. And we ended up going with Provost and Pritchard. We had one that was lower, and we don't know why they were so low. They were only eighty-nine thousand, and they went from eighty-nine thousand up to a hundred and seventy-nine thousand. And Provost and Pritchard has, they've been retained by our attorney for the lawsuit, so they do know about the system. So, they came out on second lowest.
They're the most confident lowest bid?
Yes.
Okay, questions? Motion?
Motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Raymond, second by Ambries.
Ambries?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Kale?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes, item number eight, ratifying purchase agreement for replacement of flow meters for GAC vessels at well fifteen, Copper Control, Cooper Control, Inc., interim director Shaw.
Yes, this, we did appeal. Each vessel has a meter on there, and doing the, the study for the TCP, we found out that the meters weren't functioning correctly. So, Cooper Controls come out to try to rectify that problem, found out that they needed parts that were unavailable, and the two that they could not calibrate correctly, we were gonna, we replaced those two. Well, we found out that in the Tesco control panel, that they were numbered wrong, so they replaced the two that they were trying to, to calibrate, and they were, they weren't the right ones. So, we ended up having to do the other two, which went over the twenty-five thousand dollars, came out to the thirty-nine-seven-ninety-seven.
Which triggered it, being brought before the council for approval.
Yes, so that's why we have to bring it here, because it went over the twenty-five thousand.
Right, and these meters cost so much because of the, the size of the meters, they're for the wells. You don't just go pick them up down at the local hardware store, they have to special order them, so. And these wear out pretty quick because of the type of water we have, the sand and everything else, so. Before we call for the approval on this, I want to make comment about the three things we just talked about for the general public that were following procedure and policy. And I think Councilman Raymond wanted to bring that forward so that you guys can see that we're going by the book and everything's transparent, and it's not that hard to do, is it?
No.
So. Motion?
Excuse me, Mayor, I don't know if there's a question on the GAC. There was a question in the audience, I don't know if she got it answered.
Well, we'll go ahead and call for the question on this, and then I'll address that. Any motion?
Motion to approve staff's recommendation.
I'll second.
Motion by Raymond, second by Vera.
Vera?
Yes.
Ambries?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Kale?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Who had the question on the GAC? What's your question, Mary Ann? You do.
I just want to thank Brian for pulling that aside, and basically, just keeping us in the loop literally makes us feel a little bit more at ease about what's going on with our water system, so I appreciate you pulling it. It kind of explains it, it makes it more transparent, and it makes me feel a little less paranoid about our drinking water, so thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you guys for making us do this, that's what our job is, is to make sure you guys are satisfied with what's going on in the city. So, good job on your part. Quite a bit there. Petitions and communication, I saw John here earlier. You're on, John Cardenas. With the, I'll let you introduce yourself and tell us what great things are going on down there.
Okay. Thank you for having me, for allowing me to come up and address you. A little bit about me, who is this guy? My name is John Cardenas, I'm the co-owner of the One America Tours, which is a business here in Atwater. I'm also the co-founder of a paranormal investigation tour, yep, just like on TV, but I don't have a TV show. But we do, Spirit Chasers is the name of the, the business. I'm also the current vice president of the Atwater Chamber of Commerce, and also the CEO of a recently formed 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. It's called Historical Downtown Atwater. So, second page. Was that what this thing's for here? Okay. New to this. Okay, what, what does, what does he know? Uh, I've been involved in the Merced Chamber, also the Merced County Hispanic Chamber, also the Merced County Multicultural Chamber, and the Mariposa Chamber of Commerce. I started six, six businesses, they have a lifespan ranging from three years to thirteen years. I have a degree in business, and in my travels, I've encountered several towns, small towns, that have been on the verge of being ignored and have successfully, successfully turned themselves around. Uh, so what I'd like to do is implant some of those ideas here in Atwater in the downtown section. Next page, and the goal is to form an organization with the efforts to explore and develop a plan to create a vibrant downtown that is unique. It's a mix of retail, service, entertainment, and dining experience. So, update now, January twenty-first, we came up with a concept, developed this concept of what we thought we could do with downtown. On the second, I mean, February, Mar, uh, February thirteenth, we had our first meeting. In March, we set up a Facebook page, and then April, we had our dining fundraiser, rigatoni dinner. Thank you, Mayor, for helping out quite a bit, he was in the kitchen with us.
It was a great time.
Yeah, so he helped out quite a bit there. And through that fundraising, we had enough money to set ourselves up as a 501(c)(3). So, we, on, on the eighth of, of May, we did our articles of incorporation that were filed with the state of California. And then on the twenty-third of this month, we were granted our 501(c)(3) status. Okay, so the new historical downtown Atwater. What it's all about is downtown revitalization is about more than making physical improvements, it's about bringing people together. A vibrant downtown, Main Street or city center, will give people reasons to return to our neighborhood over and over again. Creating great walkable and connectable places is a new recipe for a strong economic and community development. Here's a list of some of the places or businesses on Main Street that have actually supported us.
Can you read those off?
Okay. Urban Illustrators, Expression of Love, Granny's Pantry, Barber Club, Babelas Antiques, Needle Nook, Recovery Room, Teamwear, Electric Needle Room, Beauty for You, Bertha's Home Furnishings, Anderson Flooring, the VFW, Unique Fines, Castle Antiques, Kokamos, Got Casa Realty, Whiskey River Saloon, A1A Lots, Moore's Karate, Holman Accounting, and Atwater Historical Society.
Wow, twenty-two.
Twenty-two, yes, that's right. So, twenty-two businesses are behind this, and more coming. This is an idea or the concept of who we figure downtown, or the historic downtown is gonna be. Uh, from the west border, Wenton Way, north, Drakely, to the east, First Street, and then south would be Atwater Boulevard. So, that's the map there of what our downtown, historic downtown is gonna encompass. Okay, downtown branding. I know that this seems like it kind of skipped a couple of things, but hopefully, all of the slides are in there. All right, branding, it's important to, is important because not only is it what makes a memorable impression to consumers, but it also allows your customers and clients to know what to expect from our district. There are many areas that, that are used to develop a brand, including advertising, customer service, promotional merchandise, reputation, and logo. A strong brand name and logo or image helps to keep our area in mind to our potential customers. Our customers will come to identify downtown as a destination area, very important. A solid brand identity will serve to draw unity among businesses of the area and help build customer loyalty. People take pride in their historic connections. So, what our logo looks like is this here, that's the new logo of downtown Atwater. Uh, it kind of looks like.
Are you wearing, there you go. Where could you get those at?
Uh, one of our businesses, Urban Illustrators, right on Broadway. You can purchase, purchase those there. Now, we've got some really good shirts coming out for one of our next events, and I'll explain that one, too. Goal number two. We've got a series of things, so goal number one has already been reached, we are now a organization. Number two is to increase lighting and enhance aesthetics. This would be to accomplish by running decorative lights along the facia of storefronts on Broadway Avenue. We're gonna start on Wenton Way and go all the way to Second Street. If you've been to Turlock in the evening, downtown Turlock, you kind of have an idea of what it's gonna look like. Those are the type of lights, commercial-grade outdoor LED lights, and those are gonna be stranded along the top there. This is what it looks like at night, imagine that's Atwater.
Beautiful.
Yep, then we're gonna plant a nice restaurant there, and it's gonna become a place to be. All right, goal number three. So, no, goal number three, gateway to the historic downtown Atwater. Symbolizing the entryway from the west and the east would be two arches, if you can imagine, two arches. The west arch would be located in the vicinity of Broadway and Wenton Way, and the east, east, east arch would be located on Broadway and First Street. Uh, here's a picture of where those locations are. You can see the one on the right, that's Wenton Way and Broadway, kind of right in front of the post office there. And then to the left, no, that's the right, actually. I'm, you know, I practice doing this on my head, so that's why it kind of, you know, but no, no, to the right. First and Broadway, that would actually be where that car lot is, and right behind Bloss House. Already speaking with people that can construct it, talked to the FFA of Atwater High School, they've agreed to build, Mr. Mathis agreed to build the one on the west. So, then, of course, I went to Buick and see if they'll build the east. They're still hesitant because they're not sure if they can compete with the west. But we'll see if we can. What we need, though, is if anybody knows of an engineer, structural engineer, they can point me in that direction. Well, all I gotta do is talk to them and give them the concept. This is kind of an idea of what we're thinking it could look like. Right there, archway to historic downtown Atwater. Of course, these are not arches in Atwater, but this is what they could look like. I'm kind of partial to the one on the left, but the right looks nice, too. Of course, it would look like this, historic downtown Atwater. Welcome to historic downtown Atwater, that's what we would be seeing on the west entrance of Broadway, and also on the east entrance of Broadway. Also, additional adornments, beautification, can be placement of planters filled with colorful drought-tolerant foliage. Now, we're looking at these planters, I've seen these over at Clovis, Old Town Clovis, one of the towns that I did visit in research of what I could do with downtown. Other places I went to was downtown Lowdy, also Turlock, and, uh, let's see, what was the other one? Visilia, I met with their, some of the planners there, and also with the Chamber of Commerce to kind of pick their brain on what they did and the redevelopment that they did, that they put in. And these are where I got some of these ideas. The Atwater Garden Club said if we put some planters down, that they would come, and they would tend to them. So, we, we have assistance right there on that. Also, the ornamental metal benches could be situated throughout town. What, what Clovis did is they actually did what Bloss did with their, with their fence. Donors came, paid for the purchase of the bench, and a plaque was put on the bench. So, all we have to do is just find locations for them, if the city council would approve that, and then we just bolt them down. So, that's a few ideas. What to look forward to? Okay, so we're not sitting still. What we're doing here is we've been brainstorming on, on different type of events we could bring to downtown. Also, something I did with the chamber I'm working on is a process to begin, begin registra, registration on the Bloss Library slash Chamber of Commerce building, and making that a historical landmark. Uh, so that's one of the things that I'm doing on the side. Uh, but also, process has begun for laying down groundwork for a possible farmer's market downtown. Been talking to the college and some of the other vendors that visit the various, or attend the various farmer's markets, and trying to just get them to pick a day, see if they all, all can coordinate to have a farmer's market downtown. Also, plans to promote an outdoor activity such as concerts on Broadway, you know, maybe close the street if it's possible, of course, with your authorization, and bring a band out and just dance out in the street. The main idea here, the focus is to just bring activity to downtown Atwater. By doing that, then it gets, a reputation is developed as a town that things are always happening downtown, just like people think of Clovis, you know, the big hat days and rodeo days, and they've got their vendors out there with antiques and stuff, and that's going on throughout the year, they've got car shows there, too. What I was told is just throw any idea you can out there, people are gonna just get used to the fact that something is happening, and they're gonna start putting it down on their calendar, and they're gonna start coming around to see what it's all about. Also, working with the VFW, they want to do comedy shows and, and open to the public. Uh, also karaoke nights, and just any type of activity, just bring people downtown. Another idea is antiques, crafts, or merchant fairs. Food competitions, maybe food trucks of various foods, or maybe a barbecue cook-off or something. I know that's probably happened in other areas, but if we can just make downtown the place to visit, that's what we're focused on. Also, anything, as you can see, anything else that you will let us do, that's what we're gonna do. One of the main things I'd like to ask now is, because we're planning a car show for June twenty-first, I'd like to see if the city council would allow us to do. What's it, did I say twenty-second?
Twenty-second.
Did I say twenty-first?
Got it memorized.
Oh, I'm doing something else on that day, I'm not sure what it is, but it's happening.
So, June twenty-second.
So, so, June twenty-second, it's a Saturday, uh, we, we're planning a car show. We're also inviting vendors to come down and have retail on one side, cars on the other, and also food vendors, and a live band, and a DJ, so it's kind of, just to have all kinds of stuff happening right on Broadway. We're imagining, or we're planning to do it, to close right by Whiskey River, who's, who's involved, and they're one of our members. They want to have a beer booth, not associated with us, but they're gonna have that, and I believe that, uh, Chris has been working with ABC already and has security for that and all that. So, she's just one of our members, that's more of an attraction to the downtown area at that time, but we're not hosting that ourselves. And we're wanting to go all the way down to, I believe it's Second Street, maybe a closure there, is it Second? Yeah, Second. And that's what we're, we're hoping, that we have so much activity down there that it would, you know, count, you know, allow for the, the closure of that area. I do have a, um, I was not able to get it up on the slides, but I do have a little map here of where that's gonna, you know, what streets we need. We have already acquired, um, our insurance for that, so you guys get a million, or also two million aggregate, if something happens, I suppose, but hopefully, nothing happens. But anyways, we are protecting ourselves, and we'd like to see if maybe we could get granted, uh, street closure for that day. And also, if we can come up with a banner, would we be allowed to string it across on the two, on the wires that are right there over Broadway? Broadway, and I think the other one's on Third Street, I believe, or something, right by Anderson's? Yeah.
That is right, Kale, there. If that's all you have, I'll open it up to the public real quick, and then bring it to the council.
Sure, sure.
Any members of the public like to come forward at this time on this matter?
Good evening, everyone, to you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Paul Crane, and to the city council members, Mr. Brian Raymond. My name is Dory Anderson, I've been here, Miss Atwater. I won community service, Sashen Crown, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, I became Miss Atwater again. I won the president.
Is it on this topic right now that he was talking about?
Pardon me?
We're not gonna do public comment, just, yeah, this is on his topic he was talking about? So, you want to say something positive, I thought that was what you wanted to say?
Oh, no, no.
Yeah, you did, you had something positive to say about it, right?
Yes, I just said I would like to be a part of his event, as, 'cause I just won as Miss California.
And we expect to see you out there the twenty-second.
I would like to be a part of your event. And if it's open, I would love to be a part of it.
Yeah, we'll call you back up.
But I'll come back.
Any other members of the public like to come forward at this time? Please come forward.
I need to state my name and stuff.
Please.
Daniel Perez, twenty-three eighty-three Redwood Avenue. I've been here my whole life, and I think that'd be a great thing, and I'm glad that something's going on, you know. I go to Merced once in a while with my wife, I have supper there, and they close off. Uh, forget Henry Miller Park, I can't remember.
You're talking about the feast?
Yeah, and they have the hot rods there and stuff, and I'm like, oh, man, Atwater, that'd be great, you know, so I'm, I'm glad that it's going on, so, thank you, I appreciate it. it.
Thank you for your comments. Any other members of the public like to come forward? Seeing none. Mr. Johnson?
Yes. Is this public comment right now?
No, this is on this topic. I'm going to open public comment after this is over.
I just wanted about the public comment.
No, we'll talk about that, then. Seeing-
Are you going to go to the public here?
Seeing no members of the public, bring it back to the dais.
How long is the meeting for that?
Cindy?
Anybody else?
Mr. Johnson?
I'm sorry, I don't even-
Do you have anything you'd like to say regarding the historic downtown Atwater?
Oh, yeah, I'm excited. This is absolutely fantastic, and I'd like to promote it and help in any way I can. This is phenomenal, absolutely phenomenal. So, kudos to you and the heart that you put into, I'm super excited about. This is going to be a lot of fun. So, we'll be attending, and thank you. Thank you for everyone for doing this.
Councilman Raymond?
It's just, it's great to see the private sector stepping up and doing their part, and, you know, when you do that, it's usually more successful than the public sector, so you have good work.
Kale?
Oh, I want to say, congratulations on getting that 501(c)(3). That's nice. That makes it a lot easier on everybody. I love your ideas and your visions, John, and anything that I can do to support you or help you guys, you just name it. I'm there for you. I've heard advantage, that's for sure.
Councilman Ambrose?
I am excited to see all the changes that you have here. I already have it in my calendar for June 22nd.
(laughing)
Myself, my family will be there at the car show in support.
I'm going to get a little long-winded here, so Raymond, you cut me off when I get too long here. But, John and I, about two or three years ago, we were walking around the Bloss House, or the Bloss Library, talking about things and how to fix that up, and why that wasn't more of a focal point of our downtown. And we were talking about doing things to bring people downtown, and this didn't just happen overnight. John's been out there beating the pavement. The business owners are here tonight, A1A. You guys are making this happen. It's nobody up here. It's you guys doing it out there, and we're going to support you guys. If we got to lift mountains, we're going to lift mountains. We're going to make this successful. The shirts, the logo, that logo's absolutely beautiful. I don't know who designed that or how, but you guys, 100%, spot on, that's Atwater. That's pretty cool. Activities downtown and all downtown, that's, you know, if Mr. Bloss is still alive, he'd probably say about time. So, that's, this is really great. I'll cut it off there because I could ramble on for hours. You're looking for approval tonight, so I'm going to make the motion that we approve, and I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Motion by Creighton, second by Kale. Call for the question.
Raymond?
I believe that's also moving the park day.
Yeah.
So, it could be, it could be a fun day out there. Yes.
Lot of things happening.
Kale?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes, congratulations.
Motion passes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Comments from the public? Uh, which one?
Yeah, State Manager-
Oh, the Ad-Hoc Committee. I'm just trying to jump forward tonight. City manager reports and updates.
So, Mayor and Council, the item before you tonight is discussion and possible action regarding an ad hoc committee to review the RFPs that we received for the polling services, and maybe have two council members on the committee to work with the awarded vendor to come up with the polling questions and move forward with this item. This is for the public safety measure going forward.
So, open up to the public real quick. Any members of the public like to come forward at this time to speak about this item we're talking about right now? Not public comment yet. Seeing none, close public comment, bring it back to the dais. Council, you have any comments?
Yeah, my light's been green for a couple minutes there. I have a question. I don't know, I don't understand why, we went out to RFP to get professional services, so why are we going to have council members come up with the questions when that's what the professionals are for?
It wouldn't be to come up with them. It'll be working with that polling firm.
That's why we're paying the firm, so they come up with that. So, I'm not quite sure, you know. I don't, we got the RFPs, and now we're going to create an ad hoc, and I spoke to you about this earlier.
So, it was-
So, now we're going to create this ad hoc committee when we already have everything we need. So, I'm just not understanding the need for this.
So, I'm just asking council direction if you don't feel that you want to be, or need to be part of that, and we just move forward with the vendors. We did receive four applicants. We have good applicants that have done this type of service before, and we can find a good firm. We have anywhere from low bid was 12,000 and high bid up to 24.5. So, we can make the appointment of the vendor and bring that back to council if that's their direction, your direction. We can bring that back to the next council meeting and be able to move forward.
So, is that a motion, Raymond?
No.
Did you hear what she said? She said to do what you wanted.
I was taking notes.
Okay. So, her recommendation was just to let staff pick a firm and bring it back for approval. What was your pleasure?
I just had a comment.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to see, I agree that if staff can bring it back to us, I'd like to, I'd like to know what they're going to do for us. I mean, I don't see the need for it, I guess.
Okay. So, let's get a motion in that form, then. So, we're looking for-
So, can I make a motion that we do not go with staff's recommendation, and we do not establish an ad hoc committee to review RFPs for the polling services?
Oh, shit, that-
Motion by Vera, second by Kale, to not form a ad hoc committee and to have staff move forward.
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. Johnson, at this time, comments from the public?
At this time, any person may comment on any item which is not on the agenda. You may state your name and address for the record, however, it is not required. Action will not be taken on an item that is not on the agenda. If it requires any action, it will be referred to staff and replaced on a future agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes.
And do we do speaker cards tonight?
Yes, and I have Daniel Perez first.
Daniel Perez. Mr. Johnson, you can just line up over here. You're fine.
Hello, I'm Daniel Perez. I live at 2383 Redwood Avenue. I'm speaking on behalf of Pastor Richard Miller. He's on vacation right now, heading back to Iowa where he's from, and he wanted me to say this to you all. So, good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. My name is Daniel Perez, and I am a member of Victory Baptist Church here in Atwater. Our pastor, Richard Miller, is out of town. I just said that, visiting family, so he asked me to, oh, my goodness, all right.
He's going to watch us later, too.
All these great things about him, mate. All right. First, he would like to thank city council member Ambrose and Chief Salvador for attending and participating in our law enforcement appreciation service on May 19th. Despite the unfavorable weather that day, the service was a huge success. We had the privilege of honoring Officer Freiberg of the Atwater Police Department, Detective Ortiz of the Merced County Sheriff's Department, and Officer Mayor of the California Highway Patrol. Second pastor would like to thank the city council member Raymond for his kind words. He passed along through the city council member Ambrose on, sorry, on the morning of our event. He greatly appreciated the council members' friendship and his prayers. Last, he would like to thank Mayor Creighton and Ms. Jenny, sorry, Jen Lee Martin for the certificates that were provided for the officers on behalf of the city. We hope that next year's event is a great and as influential as it was this year. Thank you. Sorry for messing that up.
Thank you. Thank you for holding that event, too. It was very, very nice. Any other members of the public? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Richard Johnson?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. You know, there's a reason my wife and I have been protesting and speaking out at nearly every single city council, Atwater City Council meeting for the past, over the past five years. It's because we are very adamant about letting people, letting the public know just how dirty and corrupt their city government really is, and how they have destroyed our lives. Also, after my wife and I finished speaking during public comment of last month's city council meeting, we went home to view the rest of the council meeting, and watched the rest of the council meeting on YouTube. And I'll be damned if the city manager, Lloyd Waterman, along with the city attorney, Doug White, didn't tell the public more lies about us, which didn't surprise us at all. That's because everything they tell the local newspaper, the papers print, so many lies, and of course, the corrupt papers tell us they will not touch our story. Unbelievable. So, we have expected, we have accepted the fact that our local media has not and will not do us any justice, only continue to cover up the city's many civil rights and others, very serious crimes, as they continue their retaliation against us. I am here once more to let our elected officials know that we have a right to be heard, and the public has the right to know. Past and present corrupt city officials have taken everything from us, except our will to fight, and that's exactly what we will continue to do until you give us back our lives. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Any other members of the public like to come forward at this time, please?
Again, this, good evening. My name is Dory Anderson. I am your Ms. Atwater. I'm your Queen of Atwater, your Community Service winner, and the President of the United States Award winner. I have come today so that you guys know I did win for Ms. California. I'm going back to compete in August for Ms. California Nation. If I win for Ms. California Nation, I will be competing for Ms. USA. I'd like to thank the city of Atwater for keep letting me use the park to feed the homeless, to close them, to give them what they need. I'm only asking that the city of Atwater recognize that I am out there, and I'm asking that you guys to know that I do represent Atwater very well when I go to competitions. I let everyone know I am from the city of Atwater. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Congratulations, too.
Thank you.
So, what do you have on display over there?
I have on display 2017 of Ms. Atwater.
2017 Ms. Atwater.
And 2017 Community Service Winner.
2017 Community Service Winner.
2018 Ms. Atwater, and I won the President of the United States Award.
And the President of the United States Award.
I had 1,148 hours of Community Service.
1,148 hours, wow.
And I now, I just won as a nation.
We're very proud of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public like to come forward at this time? Seeing none? Not from there, you have to come up. Come on up.
Go up there.
Yep. You should put your name and all that, like you're official.
I know who I am. I'm going to be the next mayor.
I do, but all your fans on YouTube want to make sure they hear it.
Um, and listening to-
Helen Amorant?
Helen Amorant.
Thank you.
No, I know. He's just giving me a bad time. Mentioning these things going out to bid, and driving around the business park, I noticed a propane tank, and it's serviced by AmeriGas, who's a Back East company. We're locally owned. We would gladly like to bid on your use of propane.
You're talking about the city courtyard?
Yes.
I think we can arrange some information to come back to you as far as when that goes out to bid, and we'd love for you guys to bid on that.
And we'd like to help you.
We are in the same business together. So, we'll have staff reach back out to you.
Well, it's never been, it's never been offered to us, and we will be in business 50 years this summer.
Well, we do have a policy here in the city of Atwater on the books that we do business locally first if we absolutely can, so I don't see why we can't.
Well, in 50 years, they never reached out to us? Well-
Hey, you just bought it last year.
Thank you. So, you're looking at that. Okay. Any other members of the public? Seeing none, closed. Mayor's Committee Reassignment. Merced County Association of Government-
Government Board.
What?
Governing Board.
Governing Board. There's a governance here. Reassignment of the member on the MCAG Board, that's on the agenda tonight. I put that on the agenda. I want to make sure that Atwater's always represented there, and I don't have time since I work during the day. It's very difficult to get away to attend that, and I spoke with Member Kale, and asked if he would be able to maybe entertain a switch on that, where he would be the primary, and Raymond would stay the alternate. Brian, Raymond also has to work during the day, so it's difficult for both of us to make it there all the time, but Raymond's really good about making it when I can't make it. But I just want to make sure Atwater's always at the meetings, and it's important. So, I'd like to change seats with John on the Governing Board, and appoint John the primary for Atwater. Open up to public comment. Any members of the public like to come forward at this time? Seeing none, closed. Back to the dais. Direction?
Okay, I make a motion to ratify the Mayor's Committee Reassignment of one representative from Merced County Association of Governments to John Perez.
Second.
Motion by Vera, second by Raymond.
Ambrose?
You really want to do it, John? Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Kale?
No, I'm sorry. Yes.
I got the votes.
Vera?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes, thank you, John.
And it's very interesting. Now, if I could just get them to give us some money, then we'll be doing real good, right, Karen? You're right behind me, right? You're standing there behind me? Okay.
Darren Z-
Uh, council member comments. Kale?
Oh, John, I just, again, want to thank you for a great thing that you're doing. It definitely is positive progress for the city of Atwater. I'm looking forward to the day when you have, like, Clovis has your big hat day. One day, I hope you have a derby day. Because I'll be, I'll be there, okay? I'll even, I'll be the big guy. All right? Thank you. But other than that, no, I'm good.
Thank you, Kale. Ambrose?
Yes. First, I'd like to thank Valley Baptist Church for their invitation, and also for recognizing that I was in attendance. Unlike other events, I get overlooked-
It's getting better. It's getting better.
-by my two gentlemen over here.
Raymond and Kale?
And with that being said, you know, it's not really a matter about me being recognized or being at these events. As long as the individuals that I'm there to support know that I'm there, I'm happy with that. Also, wow, all of these great news tonight, that's what, that's what we got. From our projects updates to downtown changes, I think we are definitely heading in the right direction. But also, I would like, on the next agenda, if possible, to get some information, though, regarding the increased fees on the summer drop-in program, and as well as other park and rec activities. I've had some residents ask me, inquire about that, and I'd like to get them some information.
Do you want to work with the city manager on all the other things? We'll get that on the agenda for you?
Yes, please. Yes, please.
Raymond?
I have never heard Councilmember Ambrose say so many words at once.
He's happy.
Very refreshing. First, it's good to see Josiah, he's a good guy here. I guess I do business first. I got a phone call, uh, earlier today regarding a bunch of traffic speeding, um, in the area of Osborne Terrace and Jorgensen Street. So, um, maybe you can work with the chief, Lori, and see what, put in a radar trailer over there, try to curb some of that. And then also, I know there was some email correspondence going back and forth between the interim public works director and a resident, but I also got another call regarding the lights over at Manuel Barrows Park going out and some vandalism or something that happened this weekend. So I know that you were already working on that, Brian? So that's, that's good. Need to see that taken care of. But the big thing was last week, uh, we went to Atwater High School for their project-based learning, uh, exercise they did. It was fantastic. You had a bunch of kids creating, uh, and learning about issues by creating a project and having to explain it to everybody, and, uh, when you're there, it's great because you can see that the future's bright for these young folks, and, and actually having them do something hands-on is, um, better than sitting there with folks droning on and on and on and on. So it's good to see. I like the way, um, the Merced Union High School District's going, especially Atwater High School and Buhat Colony High School, so, good job.
Vera?
Yeah, just a couple things. I'll, um, start first with Dora. And as much as you love representing us, we love seeing you represent us. You're always here with a very cheerful, happy face, and so it's nice to have people go out to different places and represent our community with pride. So we're all very proud of, of where we come from. And John, um, thank you for taking a hold of this, the lead on the downtown. I know a lot of people are really excited. Um, so refreshing. It's like springtime, it's raining and hailing, but it's springtime, it's real, it's super, super exciting. Um, couple questions. I've had a lot of comments, and I know that, um, we're probably really behind because of all the rain. I don't even know if you can get a mower in the parks, but is there a mowing schedule? Or when can, especially Joan Fall Park, we have some real interest in, will that will be mowed? And is there a schedule when it's done? It is, can we post that on the website?
Yeah, it's going to be mowed tomorrow. We're kind of out of, out of the schedule right now because of the rain.
Absolutely.
But, uh, we will get the schedule up.
Okay.
We have, we have it typed out and everything.
So we're going to post a schedule on the website of when the parks are going to be mowed?
Yes.
Bingo. Have, did you go look at the lights at Manuel Barrows? Or did someone look at them? Just, I know they were working Wednesday, and then they were all three mysteriously out. Do you think that possibly they were vandalized, or did mysteriously all three lights go out in one week?
No, we found a short in one of the poles.
Oh, okay.
And it tripped the breaker, and then the schools were having problems with ants in the breaker, and the breaker was really weak. So we replaced the breaker, but we still need to repair the, the break in the pole.
Speaking of ants, been there myself, they'll eat you alive. What's, do we have any plan on treating those ants? What can we do about the ants at Manuel Barrows Park?
That Manuel, uh, we just have to get the pest control out there to, to spray.
Okay.
As soon as we get some weather.
Oh, the rain, yes.
So forecast is sunny for the next 10 days, so...
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get the pest control out there.
Do we have our own pest control, or do we have...
No, you have to have a license to do that, so you have to contract.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
We've, we've, we've had them sprayed before.
Okay, and then I know we got a couple phone calls about some, um, new residents of our city moving in behind the park over there, so I have been in touch with, uh, city manager. We have been in touch with police department. We have been in touch with some, uh... Did I talk to the county strike force?
Are you handling that?
Today?
No.
Oh.
Where are we at?
I was telling you a couple months ago.
A couple months ago?
Ah, okay, okay, so I'm just kind of getting, okay, I'm learning, I'm learning.
There's probably a whole new group out there.
I don't know. Well, there's, there's some, we have some new people back there, so I did want to follow up. I did have a short conversation this morning with Lori, left a message for the chief. We're, we're starting to work on that, so I'll, I'll respond to you and Kevin, and let you know what we find out as we move forward. You can't just pick them up and move them, there's a process. And we have begun our process, so we're moving forward. Just so you know, um, you are being heard, so, you know, I'm in that district over there. If you have problems or questions over there, call me, email me, text me.
What exactly is being done? I'm confused because it sounded like it was two months ago, but there's an issue today.
No, 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 no. Okay, I just spoke with Lori this morning. We just spoke with Lori this morning, so she's going to assist me. We're pushing forward.
Okay, so we're going to follow up with the residents because it's behind Supervisor's House and some other members over there are pretty concerned. So what, what are we going to do, Lori, city manager, to make sure that the residents that live there know what we're doing?
Well, I've already spoken with the police chief, and then we'll reach out to the task force, and then we will, if, if they've already contacted Cindy, we'll get ahold of them and let them know, otherwise we'll give you an update next meeting, we can let you...
It's just unnerving when you go out there, there's no lights in Manuel Barrows Park, there's pest infestation, and then you've got the professional homeless back there, because I've went out and talked to them, and they have no interest of receiving county services.
Excuse me, mayor, I think we're getting a little close on a possible item we may be discussing.
So anyway, staff will get back with you, Supervisor will be down, so that you know we're taking care of our part to help that area, so, um, what else?
Oh, you finished that, just fine.
Hopefully, next council meeting, um, we're going to have recognition for the girls' cross-country team Central California League Champions, is that correct? The girls or the boys? Girls wrestling team Central California Conference League Champions. Girls wrestling team second in Sac, San Joaquin sections. Monica Verdugo, second at Sacramento Masters, and fourth at USA Grade State. Girls basketball team Central California Conference League champs. Um, boys track team, guard percussion assembles, won numerous awards throughout 2018-19 band judging season. Boys double tennis, Future Farmers of America. We have a lot of people there that are going to get recognized. So, look forward to the next council meeting, and a big room of people here. John Cardenas and the Historical Downtown Association and A1A Lock for coming out tonight. Thank you, guys, for what you're doing. You are making a difference, and it's changing things downtown, and I'm really excited about the Blos Library. It's not already a historical site? You got to be joking me. So, you need any help on that, I'll help you push. Um, that's going to be exciting because that's another feather in our cap, and that opens us up to some federal, um, arts money, so, great job, John, you're bringing it home, and that's going to be, when you're done with this, it's going to be lights on Broadway? So, nice. And you guys can all come out and dance. Meeting is going to be recessed back to closed session, conference room eight.